Good morning, everybody. I want to welcome everybody to the Board of Education's March 26th work session. The purpose of the work session today is to discuss the results of the superintendent's due diligence work on the 10435 Downsville Pike property, also known as the Allegheny Energy Building. A little bit of background about how we got here. Five weeks ago today, on February 19th, the Board of Education passed a resolution which approved or entered into a purchase agreement to buy this piece of property. One of the parts of that motion that the Board passed was to task the superintendent with doing a due diligence study of the property so that we understood the physical needs of the facility, whether it could accommodate the central office functions that we would potentially be able to move there. I know personally, at the time, I had heard numbers for renovating or improving the property to the point where we could move in that ranged from a million or $2 million up to as much as $15 million. Before this Board, I think, can make a decision about how to proceed on that facility, I think we had to get our team in there and have the superintendent really tell the Board what it is that we could realistically expect the numbers to be if we were to move forward on this property. So, the purchase agreement included a 45-day study period. Today, we're at day 35. The Board needs to make a decision on this property next Tuesday. There are three things the Board could decide next Tuesday. Number one, we could decide to just abandon the contract. Number two, we could decide to just go ahead and purchase the property. Or number three, we could decide to exercise an option that's in the contract to extend our due diligence period for 30 days. So, the purpose of today's work session is to have the superintendent report his findings from the 35 days of work that he and his team have done, so that next Tuesday, when the Board of Education meets, we can decide whether we need more time to make a decision, whether we just want to abandon the property and say, "This is not going to work for our central office," or whether we're going to be at a point where we can decide, "Yes, this is what we want, and we're going to move forward with this piece of property." So, with that as background, I will turn it over to the superintendent, so he can provide us with his report.
Well, thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. Thank you for joining us today. I do want to start with some introductions. Well, I think the Board may know, those who are in the room from outside the school board, but also those who might be looking in on Channel 99, may not know some of the faces of the table. We've had a project team that has met on almost a daily basis since the Board has provided this charge to us. It's been led by Deputy Superintendent Boyd Michaels. Boyd has worked with his staff, and that includes Rob Rollins, Mark Mills, and our project manager on this, Brad Otto. Brad is one of our newest team members. He brings a great deal of expertise to this, and we felt this was a perfect use of his skills to walk us through this process in a very analytical and thoughtful way. Also at the table today is the representative that has been working with us on the realty side of the equation, but also providing us lots of other intelligence on the property, and that's Julian Etches. Julian works with McShay and Associates. Julian, thank you publicly for the work that you've done. And seated right next to Julian is Harry Reynolds. Harry is retired from Calis Contractor. He now does some consulting work in the community. More importantly, he is a disinterested party who's interested, if you will. Harry has taken a careful look at this facility, so he has some basis of what our operations look like on a day-to-day basis, and his contracting background has allowed him to then look in on those who are helping us to understand this process and say, "Ask this question, ask that question, did you think about it this way?" So, Harry, I want to thank you also for the time that you have volunteered to this project. I also want to state very clearly that Mr. Reynolds has volunteered his time. He has not charged us dollar one to be engaged in this process. Members of the Board and Mr. President, one thing I do want you to know, that while we have been looking at this facility, we've also talked with a number of other folks who have brought forward ideas and thoughts. I simply don't want the community to think that we are a one-trick pony in this, that we've made up our mind. We very clearly understand that this Board has a decision to make, and we wanted to pursue as many options as we could. To that end, we have had several meetings with the city. We have met privately with the mayor and the city executive. We've met with local developers for projects that they might have in the offering. We've met also with business leaders who've had property that they wanted to offer to the school board, both downtown and out of town. We have also met with a group called the Sora Group, who has a large-scale vision for downtown Hagerstown. And as I mentioned before, we've taken numerous comments from community leaders, community members across the county. But let's turn to the Allegheny site, and what we'll show here is an aerial view of the property. And as you look at this, from right to left, you see the drive coming into the property off of the Downsville Pike. The physical address is 10435 Downsville Pike, and we'll walk right into it. I also thought that maybe pulling back a little bit, it might make some sense to show you some of the properties around the facility that we are looking at. And first and foremost, right behind it, you can see IntelSat Corporation, a technology company that does really high-level intelligence, for lack of a better word. In addition to that, right behind the property is the T. Rowe Price Building. So, you can see on the far left of the screen, the Downsville Pike, and then you can see our facility. If we take a look at a closer level, what this diagram shows and you have in your handout is a title company's kind of review of the physical property. And what you see here are a number of things. Let me superimpose kind of a Google interface across the top and just point out that what you see in the white dotted line is the property line. You see that the county has some easement out near the Downsville Pike, and you also see the utility easements, the sewer easement, and the water easement in this property. As you look carefully at this, what you'll see on the left-hand side, as you look at this picture, is parking for almost 400 cars in the area that kind of looks striped, if you will, from this vision. And then you see the physical layout of the building. And again, this is an aerial view. The Board gave us a task to go through, and we've taken that very seriously. The first was to complete the due diligence study for the potential relocation into this building. We have now spent a considerable amount of time doing that. In that process, we've identified and prioritized immediate issues, those things that would keep us from relocating in the short term, things that we'd have to do very early on if we took possession of this facility at the Board's direction. We've also tried to attain, obtain some cost estimates for remediating those issues. I want to be very clear with the Board right now that we have not taken any specific proposals for remediation. What we've said is, "What do you think these things might cost to a number of companies in this community?" And I'll go through those in some detail in just a moment. In addition, we said, "You know, there are some things that you can live with, and there are some things then come longer term," and so we've identified and prioritized some of those longer-term issues. We've also done the same exercise in trying to obtain the cost for meeting those longer-term issues. Let me just tell you, this is a place where Harry Reynolds has been instrumental in our process, because Harry has looked at some of those initial costs, and then he's pushed back on both us, in our thinking, but also on some of the contractors, saying, "Well, did you think about it this way? Did you think about it in construction terms that might be more in line with a commercial building as opposed to a school building?" We also spent some time talking about what might happen if, in fact, the Board pushed through with the purchase of this. How would we get to the point of occupancy? And finally, we have prepared this report to you. So, without any other comment, we'll start the discussion. For those of you who are following in your book, we are now on page six, and what I'm going to do is show you the areas that we spent time looking in during this due diligence period. We began with a fairly thorough review of the mechanical systems. We moved on and talked about the electrical systems. Many of you know that this Allegheny Energy Building was the former headquarters of an electric company. The conventional wisdom on the street is, if you sell electricity, you don't care about how much it costs. And so, this building was built with disregard for electrical fees. What we found is that's not necessarily true, but there are some places that we think we can improve the efficiency of many systems in the building. We've also taken a very careful look at the environmental aspects of this facility. We've looked at the structural composition of this building through a structural engineering firm. We've taken a very careful look at the roofing, not only of the main building, but of the architectural roof that's over the main building. And we've looked at the outside facilities, meaning the ancillary facilities to this building. We've also gone through this building and realized that since it was built almost 40-some years ago now, there might be changes to life safety codes, so we've had some folks inside the building looking at what we would have to do to upgrade to current standard. We also realized that any time you move into, whether it's a house or a building, there are just little things that you've got to pay attention to. We'll spend some time talking about those other considerations as well. So, let's begin, first of all, by looking at the mechanical systems. This building analysis was provided by Kirkland, and what you'll see here is that Kirkland took a very careful look at the chiller, boiler systems, and pumps in the building. They looked at domestic water circulation. They looked at the way exhaust was taken from the building. They looked at thermal air units. They have taken a look at control, temperature control systems. They have taken a look at the HVAC computer control systems, and they looked at the electronic, the electric baseboard heaters. They spent a great deal of time in the building. We actually brought all the systems up and online in the building for almost a week so that they could complete this review. We also did an electrical review. We had MEC Electrical Construction in on the property. They looked at the switchgear and supplies. They looked at the branch circuit panels. They spent time looking at the lighting and lighting control systems. They looked at the UPS or the underpowered power supply systems, and they also looked at the emergency power systems. Those are the backup diesel generators that are behind the facility as well. To look at the environmental aspects of this building, we asked Triad, a company that many of you are familiar with as Board members, because they've done much work for the school system before. They looked at a Phase 1 environmental review. They reviewed historical documentation. They looked at the environmental database review, and they actually went out and did a site inspection checking on various environmental conditions within the facility. We asked MGV, a consulting structural engineering company, to take a look at the structure of the building. They looked at the steel, the steel construction of the facility. They looked at the masonry, the concrete, and they ultimately passed judgment on the building envelope and how we would seal that building. Life safety systems was conducted by Simplex Grenell. They looked at our code compliance issues, the fire alarm system, the sprinkler system. And in this building, because of the high-end technologies that the company used that was there and that we would bring, they looked at the dry fire suppression systems as well. This includes both halogen gases in the computer operation centers and some other, I believe, CO2 compression in the kitchen facilities. We also took a fairly detailed look at the roof, taking not only kind of a visual of the roof, but putting roof cuts in so that we could look at the condition of the insulation under the roof. And what we did is we looked at both the upper roof, which I mentioned is an architectural feature of the building. We looked at the mid roof and the south wing roof, as well as the auxiliary building's roof. And we know that we have some work to do there. So, let's spend some time talking about now that list of miscellaneous items. And please, Board members, at any point that you ask me to come back and review this, I gladly will. I know I'm going through at some pace, but I want to share quite a bit of information with you today. When we got into the facility, we began looking at some of the challenges, for example, that the heating, lighting solution presented us as it was engineered. And so, we thought that we would have to have some architectural engineering design service to help us think through that. We have budgeted some money to do that. We also know that any facility that has sat vacant for eight years is going to have some issues relative to flooring, paintings, ceilings, the partitions between spaces. They need some attention. We've looked at the technology infrastructure. That includes not only the wiring for our PCs or our desktop computers, but telephone systems. Obviously, today, one of the things that you think very carefully about is security and accessibility to your facilities, so we have spent some time looking at those issues. We've also looked at hazardous materials. As I said, this building was built almost 40 years ago. There is some asbestos in the building. We've looked at where that is, what it would cause to remediate or remove that asbestos. We've also spent time out in the parking areas, looking at the site, the asphalt parking lots. We've looked at landscaping. We've looked at, you know, one of the issues that's come up is the grounds. It's 44 acres. How do you take care of that? So, we've looked at, you know, what mowing would take place, what snow removal would take place. We've really spent some time thinking through those things. We've also thought about just kind of a good, old-fashioned floor-to-ceiling cleaning of the facility, and we've talked about what furnishings from this building could go over and sit right in there as opposed to buying all-new furnishings. And I think we're pretty excited about the fact that almost everything that we have done here in the last few years is portable, and we can take over to the new facility if, in fact, it's the Board's pleasure to do that. And we also thought that, you know, this is not a move that can take place with an old pickup truck and a bunch of guys working on Saturdays. What would it cost to have some professional moving services come in and take us over there? Perhaps, perhaps. Pocket full of big trucks. So, you know, we've outlined a fairly big scope of work that's been reviewed. We have a number of projects that would have to be done. So, what Brad put together for us is a schedule that perhaps could give us some sense of what the next days would hold if, in fact, the Board thought that this purchase was a worthwhile move. So, you can see that in this 45-day review period, the dotted line represents today, that we have nearly, we've completed really the great majority of the due diligence. And let me simply say this. We've had companies in this building looking very carefully at this scope of work that I've outlined for you. Does that mean that they have seen every possible defect in this building? No, they have not. There may be some things behind the things that they've looked at, but we believe, based on the conversations that we've had, that the majority of the expense has been identified. Might there be some places where there's additional expense? Yes, there may be. But there also may be areas that we don't have to expend money that they identified because they haven't run the system up fully. So, we really believe on balance, what we're going to give you is a very clear picture today of what it would cost to come into this facility and the timing that it would take. So, you can see that we have almost a week left in this 45-day period. We believe that if we got to that position on August, April 2nd, that we could close in early May. We think that we could then begin the renovation of the facility. Conservatively, we believe that we could complete a Phase 1 renovation in six months. So, prior to the winter holiday that we are coming up on in the next school year, we believe that a number of folks could be in that facility. It's a fairly aggressive timeline, but at the same time, we think it's reasonable. And then we could continue on with a Phase 2 of the move-in during this 2014 year. So, let's talk about that. Dr. Harding's identified a purchase price of $5.5 million. We have carefully reviewed how we would do that. We would do that using fund balance. And then we look at initial costs to move in. When the mechanical systems, when Kirkland was there, they said that you could probably complete about $800,000 worth of work and be ready to move into that facility. When we talked to MEC Electrical, they said that the electrical would probably break down to another $800,000, and you can read down this list. We have environmental costs of about $180,000. There is literally no structural repair. The structural engineers did note that there was some light cracking of the brick facade on the facility that should be within a year, tuck-pointed and resealed. We will look at that, and you'll see we identified money in year two. We've taken a look at roofing, and we phased that cost. We believe that we can put new roofs on the building. Life safety systems, this primarily is tied up in sprinkler systems, if I'm not mistaken. And coming up to fire code, some little things in the stairwells where we have to raise. The railings are caught up in there. And then we have some miscellaneous costs that I mentioned to you earlier, just kind of a potpourri of items that we have to address, from painting, window dressings, things like that. In addition to that, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that there is some discretionary spend in there in case we get into something that we just hadn't anticipated in that contingency fund. So, let's look then at the second-year cost, and what you'll see there is an additional 2.1. So, we're saying that the overall cost for us to get into this facility would be the purchase price plus $6.6 million. We think that that is a very reasonable and responsible number. We think that in many ways, we may be conservative, but again, I want to just qualify that by saying that we have not rejected the first specific proposal at this time, okay? Now, here are some other things that our review brought to our attention. We absolutely believe that this facility, because it is larger than the facility that we're in, gives us opportunities to recover both instructional space, expanded enrollment options going forward, and then delayed or deferred school costs. Let me explain what I mean by that. Recovering instructional space, two examples that I would use right now would be, many of you know that our print shop is currently taking up classroom space at Washington County Technical High School, about 3,000 square feet. If we move the print shop over to the Allegheny Energy space, we then create capacity at Washington Tech. Many of you know that many of those programs at Washington Tech are screaming for space. They're oversubscribed. One example would be the Medical Sciences Program that's run by Sally Irwin, where literally they turned down two applicants for every one that they accept. We think that we could expand that program over time with some facility reengineering there if we create the space. That's good for kids. It's good for business and industry to have a ready and willing workforce coming out of Washington County Tech. Another example of space might be Marshall Street School. We have a number of special education staff that are currently housed in that facility. We have our Medicaid billing offices over there. We also have a lot of our physical therapists and others who don't really require much space or time in the facility, but they do take up space in a facility. If we brought them out of Marshall Street and brought those folks over to Allegheny, we consolidate operations in special education, and we create instructional space for the students in this district who need it the most. That doesn't even begin to speak to relocating programs like our teacher training programs, the academies that we have at North and South High. It doesn't begin to speak to perhaps bringing over pre-K kids out of some of our current sites so that those teaching academies would have students who the students could intern with and work with, which would then create additional space. The aggregate effect of creating high school capacity, whether it's at Washington Tech or North or South High, is really this, that perhaps the county could look at the out-years as to when we would need a high school. It is possible that this facility could create at least a reprieve of several years for when we would need a high school. Why is that important? Well, a high school today is going to cost anywhere from $70 to $85 million. If you can push that into the future, if you can cost-avoid that for some time, that's a good thing. That doesn't say that we don't have to plan for the eventuality at some point. It simply says that we may have, if we're smart about this, the opportunity to push it a little further into the future. We also have the opportunity to consolidate some facilities. Many folks who are watching this are thinking about this building alone. Well, one of the things that we house is our facilities group across the street at 701 Frederick. That's about 17,000 square feet of space right now. If we could pick up that 17,000 square feet of all of our facilities people and bring them in-house with the rest of the administrative staff, we not only, I think, could have better planning on operations of those facilities across the county, but we would then be able to sell 701, which is owned by the school board, and perhaps recover some of our initial cost. There are several opportunities to do things like that. There's the Job Development Center, and there's also some rental space that we could move away from getting that we're now renting for storage. For example, the space that the Board just approved at 790 Frederick Street. So, we believe there are opportunities here for cost reduction and cost avoidance. And quite frankly, I think what those opportunities do is say to the folks who say, "You're buying a facility that's too big. Why would you be doing that?" That there is a larger vision that they just haven't been part of understanding yet. There are some added values. As most people who watch this probably don't know is that as a school system, we can't land bank. We don't have the ability to think 20 years into our future and say, "Let's go buy that lot" as a school board because we might need an elementary or middle school. This building comes with 44 acres. The site itself sits on about 16 acres. That means that we have an additional capacity on this campus, if you will. If the day comes that we need a school, a middle school, or an elementary school, we may have some land that works. Now, all that's contingent on enrollments and where kids actually live and the zones that we would create for school attendance, but it does give us the potential to do that. I've not yet seen another option brought forward that gives us that potential. So, I simply say to the Board, "This is a value add that we ought not lose sight of." So I simply say to the board, this is a value add that we ought not lose sight of. I've already mentioned the 65,000 square feet difference in that facility from this facility and the cost effectiveness that it provides for us. We still, however, have some questions to answer, and questions are these. We don't yet know, we don't yet know, we don't know at this moment what the future of the planetarium would be. Would we take it with us? Is there space in that facility that would allow for the dome structure that we use to project the stars and the planets? We don't know. We're looking into that. I will tell you that we've been approached by some folks downtown who have a connection to the Discovery Center that says that they would love to see us support their program by making the planetarium available to the Discovery Center, but I also know that conversation is very premature at this time, but it's out there. We've talked about some opportunities for this facility. We know that most of this facility is going to have to be razed. It's simply not efficient space. It's space that, quite honestly, I think was described as sick. So we're going to have to tear a lot of it down. But I believe there are some partnership opportunities, and I've had some preliminary conversation with the county executive and at least one commissioner, thinking about the bus lot back here, the bus wash, the mechanics garages, and that huge parking area back there, as well as the fuel tanks, about what if we consolidated some operations of county government and their large vehicles with our vehicles on this campus or city vehicles came over, and we shared that facility as a fuel site or as a maintenance site? There is that possibility. That's simply all we will say. There also, I think, the room that we're sitting in really is quite a nice room. Just outside the windows and doors of this facility is a very nice pool that the community uses. There is the possibility that the city might take this facility for some kind of community recreation space or offices for parks and rec. So there are just some issues that we have to resolve yet. We've just not been able to work through things like the planetarium or the partnership opportunities. And quite honestly, it's probably premature to do that until the board makes a purchase or not purchase decision. That really concludes the comment portion that I make, and now I think all of us who have been part of this study stand ready and willing to answer your questions. As I mentioned before, we have Mr. Reynolds here, Mr. Etchings is here from the private sector side, and then our team is here as well. So I'm going to turn it to you, Mr. President, and wherever you'd like us to go, we will.
Thank you, Dr. Wilcox. I think we'll open it up to any questions, comments, or discussion from board members. Mr. Rightman?
And I'll come back later if something comes up. I do want to put these numbers out because I think it's significant. If you look at the cost of this building, both as is and as improved, when we're talking about $6.7 million or whatever the number was, again, $6.6 million of improvement plus 5.5, but at as is, and working in my profession, that's something that we look, the as-is cost of this building right now, 132,000 square feet is $44.60 per square foot. And the as improved is 91.6. The numbers that I've heard floated around for a new structure on significantly smaller piece of property are running anywhere from 180 to $200 a square foot. Now, there may be, you know, there may be some leeway on both ends of that, but, I mean, you can see there is a significant difference. And from my perspective, and again, I thought Dr. Wilcox did a marvelous job of explaining that, I think what this building does, and from my perspective, looking at it right now, and something could change in the next four or five days, I don't know, but it does give us incredible increased program operational flexibility. And I think the land has always been very, very attractive to me, you know, because we are always in a position where we wonder, okay, where can our next school go? And can we get it for a reasonable cost? You know, we now have banked approximately 40 acres that we can use for a variety of purposes. So I appreciate, you know, the work that all of you have done, and Mr. Reynolds in particular, thank you again. I mean, you've made our job a heck of a lot easier with your professionalism and understanding of what's going on. And the companies, and, you know, we spoke to the Chamber yesterday and mentioned the companies that did the analysis for us. I mean, they're respected. There's not a company there that, you know, is doing this and, you know, coming up with numbers that they wouldn't support, you know? So to all of you, thank you for the effort and the due diligence, and you've given us something to move forward with, and I greatly appreciate all of your work.
Other comments or questions? Ms. Breitman, sure.
I'd like to recognize the mayor of Hagerstown, who is with us this morning, and I appreciate his attendance. And sort of to bring it to the Hagerstown conversation, I know when I first came on the board in '07, Barbara Ingram School for the Arts was the topic at that point. And I know that part of that decision process included a list. And on that list, it was the contributions made by the Chamber, the contributions of the tax credit, some waivers, some utility waivers. There was, and I didn't pull out, but there were all these lists of profits that the city was making and other organizations would make, and it was in writing. So it, I think, helped me at least, look at the pros and cons of making that decision because I had some fairly hard numbers that the state had guaranteed and so forth. Have we seen that sort of commitment from the city or from any other interested stakeholder at this point?
Well, let me begin with outside of the city. We've had one developer who has approached us now with a model, a schematic drawing of a facility. That same developer has now come forward with a partner that they would use in the construction of a building for the facility. We've not had any conversations, and I don't, about the finance related to that. That's a conversation that this board will have on April 2nd with that developer behind closed doors in private session. And it would have been premature for me, as your superintendent, to have that without your express permission. So other than that, the only other conversation that we have had have been with people who have said, we have land if Allegheny doesn't go forward, that we would like you to look at. I have also then met with private developers downtown to look, for example, at the Susquehanna Bank Building. But we went down there, and their expressed interest to us in the Susquehanna Building was remodeling that facility and then leasing space back to us for the Barbara Ingram School. Other than that, we've not had any conversations directly with developers. With the city, I've met with both the mayor and the city manager. I've met with the city manager one-on-one. I've met with the mayor one-on-one. Although we didn't have great depth of conversation, I think it's fair to say that there was at least a general conversation where I talked about the Allegheny Building as a possible purchase, talked about some of the costs associated with renovations, and the city was very clear coming back and saying that they could provide a clean, green site, that that's what they would be interested in doing, that they would expedite some of the utilities hookups, and that they would commit to parking for our employee groups. But I've not really seen anything in writing. I've had a number of conversations, but I haven't been given anything directly in writing. I want to be very clear. As I mentioned when I made my opening comments, we have been approached by leadership from greater Hagerstown, from the Chamber. We haven't taken that lightly as an administrative team because we had clear direction from the board, and that is keep all options open. And so, Mrs. Breitman, during that time, we've not had a specific proposal other than the one that you will hear on the 2nd.
And that was my understanding. I just want to sort of have that conversation in public venue like this. And I guess what also drives that is the State of the City presentation last month. Just as a spectator there, when I listened to the council members speak about this issue, there were two issues mentioned, the State Department, Central Office, Board of Ed. There was one council member that said, whatever they need, we'll make it happen. One council member put a cap of $2 million. One council member said, we don't have enough information yet to cost it out, but there are limits. And one council member basically said, make them do it. And I'm not trying to be unkind, but I didn't see a consensus there. So that's where I'm going with this, and I say this fully knowing the mayor is sitting to my right here and is a good friend, and I'm very supportive of his effort to work in revitalizing downtown Hagerstown. But I'm not hearing a consensus, and that's very concerning. So I just, I put that out there.
Well, and the only thing that I would add is that we've also recently, as recently as last week, been in conversation with the city's partner, the Sora Group, through the letter of, and we had a very good conversation. I think some of the individual board members have now met with the representatives of Sora Group, but when we met with them, they have a big-picture commitment to the city and to revitalization, but they don't have a plan. They're building that plan. And so they were not able to promise anything for us. I would share with folks, you know, I've had some conversations with a number of folks, as I mentioned, local businessmen, at least one development group, and Sora. And they all say kind of the same thing, that going downtown is important, and we agree on that. But the question then turns to, at what cost? And nobody has been able to bridge that gap yet. There have been some who have said, well, we understand that your costs at Allegheny might be $12 million. Building a new building downtown with land acquisition and others might be as much as $18 million. And that doesn't include the city building a deck, which they may do independently of all of this. But the next piece that happens is you ask them, well, if we do this on a lease purchase or lease-to-own basis, can you begin to talk to us about what our costs might be? As recently as yesterday, one of those groups said to me, well, probably $1 million over 30 years, and you'd own it at 30 years. My direct response then is, how is $30 million the same as $12 million today? And no one can get over that, but they just say, well, because it's the right thing to do. As I said before, we are not a taxing authority, but I do believe it's my responsibility to encourage the board to pursue responsible use of taxes. That said, this is clearly a board decision. It is not a superintendent-directed decision. My team will do whatever this board asks us to do.
Are there other questions or comments? Ms. Fisher?
There's one item that there are no, that have to this point, no costs associated with, and that is demolition of portions of this building. Has there been any estimate given as to what it would cost to demolish parts of this building?
We haven't put a specific number to that, but the number that we typically use, based on other demolition work that we've done around the county, about $5 a square foot is what we'd anticipate we'd also have to. And that's why we need decisions about, long-term, decisions about the planetarium. Mark, Rob, and Brad have looked at various ways to, if we kept the planetarium where it is, how we might wall that off separate of a demo of the rest of the facility. Couple different options, potentially for transportation. My goal, number one, would be to get them up out of the basement. We constantly have flooding down there, leaking. Recently ripped out all the drywall because of mold issues and things. So my goal is to get them up out of that area. But we have several options. Might include, you know, pushing them towards the planetarium, walling them up together, maybe moving up into space like CP3's in right now, might be another option, and kind of separating that area. So a couple of different options we'd look at with that type of thing.
Mr. Bailey?
We sit as an elected board and have responsibility to our citizens that put us in these positions. And I would just like to make a brief comment that for the past 35 days, that I have received comments, I've been told that it is important that we look at all of our high schools, for example, and their proximity to this location. And they point out that seven of the locations are in a much favorable position in proximity to the Downsville Pike location than there would be to a downtown location, including even Smithsburg. If you come down 66 and hit the interstate, you even serve the community of Smithsburg better in that kind of arrangement. So, you know, I think we've all heard a great deal from our citizenry, and I think their voices ought to be heard, so I make those comments.
I think Dr. Horrigan's made a non-the-analysis with Dr. Wilcox on the difference from the schools to Allegheny, excuse me, the Downsville location as to this location, I believe it's pretty much a push. In some areas significantly better and in some, you know, city schools maybe a little farther, but.
Yeah, Mr. Rightman, what I did is I, what I asked is one of the staff members to just pick 12 schools at random without telling her the express purpose. She picked 12 schools, and then we Google searched both the distance to and from and the time to and from. It was a wash. It was six of one and six of another. What surprised me, quite honestly, and this has to do with proximity to 70 and 81, is that some of the North County schools, for example, North High, is actually 10 minutes closer, according to Google, using the interstate than it would be leaving this site and going home. And again, that's all subject to traffic on 70 and traffic on 81, and I understand that. I simply was trying to look at, you know, some of the comments that I've seen, so I said, please take a look. And I think to Mr. Bailey's point, the high schools generally are closer, where you obviously get into some difficulty in kind of figuring it out, is if you try to go from here to Western Heights, if you try to go from here, clearly from here to Bester, it's going to be further. Here to Winter Street is further, but it's a shorter time period. So, you know, it's half a dozen of one, six of another.
I'd like to just ask Mr. Reynolds, and I as well want to add my thanks to your giving of your time to help us out on this. This is the second round you've helped us on, in this project, so thank you very much. When you came to present your report in December, one of the questions I had asked you was, just overall, what's your assessment of this building? And you captured it pretty well in saying, I think you said something to the effect of, it's the worst I've seen.
One.
One of the ones, okay. Something for us to aspire to. You've been through a lot of facilities, and I would just ask you the same thing regarding the Allegheny Energy property. What, I mean, what are your general thoughts about that building? Do you think it's a good facility? Do you think it's, do you think we're being realistic, or the superintendent's being realistic in what he's brought to us? Do you think it's a facility that could serve us for a long time, or do you think it's not, not as good as some people in the community have suggested it might be? You've been through a lot of buildings, so I'm just interested in your, your overall thought.
Well, as most of you know, I worked for Calis for almost 30 years, so I've been in many of the buildings in Washington County and the surrounding area. It is one of the... in many of the buildings in Washington County and the surrounding area. It is one of the most structurally sound buildings that I've been in. Our firm did all this, the renovations to the third floor, and many of you apparently have been through the third floor. In fact, it's in move-in condition, in my opinion. You could occupy that tomorrow with a little cleanup and check in the life safety codes. Structurally, the building is very sound. Mechanically, that's been addressed. I was thoroughly impressed with the MEC and their electrical analysis of the building. The roofing has certainly been, with the time that permitted, been investigated. There are some things that weren't mentioned here. There's a sizable kitchen and dining facility in that building. Whether you could use that for in-house, or whether you could use that as part of the VOTEC, I don't know. The computer facilities on the first floor, I have a Liebert system, which apparently is functional. You have a raised floor system. I can see consolidation of your computer facilities in this building, which are scattered throughout the building. I can see that as a real plus.
There is fiber in the building. Is there adequate fiber to meet our needs?
There's fiber to the building. What we run is our own backbone, so that we don't pay like a Verizon for it. And our intention would be, and we build into this cost, to kind of unplug from this building and to replug everything back out in that building. Simplest way I can describe it is, we basically run an extension cord of fiber from here to each of our buildings. And that, that is a big cost avoidance over paying a Verizon or a carrier for every one of our, for every one of our buildings. It also helps with our spam software and those types of things. Everything runs through one main server here on those types of things. Other school systems pay for those types of servers, pay their backbone services, and then pay to have a spam filter at every one of their locations, which is a lot of upkeep and maintenance and things like that. So, we've looked carefully at where the pops are out there and what it would take to get our, to get our backbone out there. But there is fiber in the building, and some initial use of that certainly would be possible immediately.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Well, that's okay. And the numbers that Mr. Reiden now just went over are right in line with the numbers that I would have given you.
Right.
The $100 a square foot for that building versus 180 to 200 for downtown, or for here, or wherever, are in line. I've had the opportunity to review the numbers that Brad and Mark put together, and I, I can concur with the time that we've had. It just makes good economic sense. But, but let me say, since Dave Hanlon is here and the mayor, I am a proponent of downtown. But to me, this just doesn't make good economic sense to spend that kind of money in downtown. And as a taxpayer, I, I want to hold our elected officials accountable for judicious use of my tax dollar. And this just makes good sense to move to Downsville Pike.
Can I just?
Sure, sure.
Please. Apologize.
Jump in.
Not really a question. One for Julian. You know, being, having been through that building, as you know, numerous times in the last eight years, to tell you the truth. The third floor has, when we, if and when we purchase, the third floor has furniture and some other amenities. Are they, I mean, are they going to take everything out, Julian? Do you know, or?
No, everything is, it's as is, so everything stays.
Damn, that breaks my heart. Okay. The other thing, I think that what you said, and the first time I saw it in 2004, you know, the thought process was, the bones of this building are amazing. And to see, then, the structural numbers, which is next to nothing.
It's cosmetic.
Is, yes, exactly. The point, you know, facade. Just, you know, I felt almost vindicated because it, it really is. I mean, this building, I don't know how you could build this building, you know, for less than $250 to $300 a square foot today.
That's probably correct.
You know, because the, you know, and again, what you said, what Dr. Harding said earlier about, you know, the funny thing about electric companies, you know, they don't care about how much electricity you use. A lot of companies don't care what they spend, you know, to get their corporate office exactly the way they want it. And I think that was the case when this building was constructed. It was going to, you know, in their mindset, it was going to be the best of the best. And, you know, it's going to last until we're ready to move out, which it did. So, you know, it is, you know, I always have thought this was a very, very impressive structure, structurally. And, you know, these numbers just reinforce that, you know, maybe beyond what I even thought. So, thanks again. That's pretty interesting stuff.
Can I just ask the superintendent, how much of the dollar amount that you've sort of projected here, how much of that is contingency? So, you know, what I'm trying to get at is, how much have we built in to the budget numbers you've provided? How much of what's built into that is?
I believe we built in 500, a little over $500,000 in contingency, maybe closer to 560, $570,000. In addition, we built in a little over $300,000 in A&E expense. So, you know, there's $800,000 in expense that is not directly related to renovating the facility, but to help us get to the point where we can.
And one other question. Having gone through the building and gone through this process, do you have some sense of where the figure that sort of floated around in the community of 10 to 12 million dollars for the renovation came from? You know, I've heard that from a couple of sources. Do we, do we have a sense of where that number came from, or why we think that's not a good number?
I'll share what I've been told by a number of folks. Two, two different developers have told me that when they went into the facility to begin looking at building it, and Julian, you can correct this if it's wrong, because you've actually represented some clients who've looked at it. But the way the building was designed with its center core and its elevators at one end of the facility, they couldn't figure out a way to turn it into a commercially viable space because they couldn't get to the third and fourth floor, the, the second and third floors, without putting new elevators in, completely changing the entrance to the facility. So, that was one thing. And the other thing that I've heard is that when people went in and saw the third floor, they really thought that what they would then have to do on second floor and first floor was replicate that design to have a consistency through the building. And that construction, as Mr. Callis said, was really top-of-the-line at the day, built by Callis. So, it's really those two factors. And again, I would defer to people who are in the business, but that's what I've heard in the community.
Yes, I would say exactly that. That's been the feedback I've received, that people have gone through that, exactly.
Are there, Mrs. Harshman?
Well, I have a few questions and comments. I did want to say that I have received some phone calls. I've been approached by citizens who think that to go downtown would be a huge waste of their tax dollars. They would prefer that we use this mainly because not only would it be easily accessible, but it would give us additional space that downtown would not. I know that when we talked about downtown, I believe everything that was included was only office space for us, and then nothing else. There really would be no way of growing, no way of adding on or doing something without taking over more space downtown and restructuring. I know we talked about the maintenance, maintenance of this building. And to wait for downtown to come up with a space that would be anywhere in the ballpark of Allegheny, I'm sure would take several years to build. I'm still waiting for the library. Also, there would be no space for our scattered rental places or owned places that we now have throughout the county. That would be nice to consolidate so that we do not have that additional cost. And that would also alleviate part of the cost to this particular building. I find it kind of interesting that we often hear that by moving downtown, we would put 200 more feet on the street. I am not sure the total number of people employed within this building, but I do know that many of them are not here during the day. They're out and about the county. So, they're not downtown for part of those 200 feet. Also, I believe lunch hours extend for only 30 minutes. And in that case, I'm not sure how far you would walk to get lunch, and also to sit down and have lunch and to leave. And I know that most people do not leave until 5 o'clock. So, I'm not sure where they would shop, since most of the shops downtown have closing hours of 5 o'clock. So, that concerns me. Today, I had to borrow 25 cents to pay the parking meter for the county commissioner meeting because I accidentally only brought two quarters. So, I found that rather discouraging, and certainly an element that I'm concerned with, because I know a lot of people run in here to pick something up. Well, in order to do that downtown, you either have to find a parking place, you would have to go to the parking garage, you would have to go in, you would have to find a parking place there, come into the office, maybe get something stamped, if we were so fortunate as to allow our citizens to come in and get, have free parking, to pick up a sheet of paper that they need urgently. So, I just, again, I, I said this before, and I still do not see any comparison with anything that we've seen, anything that we've heard, or anything that we've done. And I was through the building, and I agree that the third floor with a little cleanup is absolutely fantastic. With movable walls, you can reconfigure things in any way you choose. You could use it for any number of situations, classrooms, meeting rooms, et cetera. So, I just personally have not seen anything right now that comes close.
Thank you, Mrs. Harshman.
You're welcome.
Other comments, or Mrs. Williams?
Yes, I, I would like to thank our team, Mr. Rollins, Mr. Otto, Mr. Mills, and Mr. Uchis and Mr. Reynolds, for providing us with the in-depth information that's going to help us decide which of these three directions that President Harding gave us at the beginning of the, of the meeting, which way we're going to go. I only wish that the city had provided us with some commitments, or what they will do, as opposed to what they could do, what was possible, maybe. And I know that the decision that we make as a board will be based on the information that's presented in light of what makes good business sense for the school system and for the taxpayers of the county. To me, this decision to move the central office, and as a retiree who spent 35 years visiting and working in the central office, I have a sense of what happens here and who works here, and its importance to the system. So, moving the central office isn't about having all the governmental agencies in one location. It's not about having our central office near one of our many schools in the district. It's not about being near the library or near the University of Maryland. It's not about creating critical mass in an area that needs revitalized. It's about using our limited resources, time and money, to relocate the school system's central office so that we can get about doing what we're here to do, which is to educate our children in the best way possible.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Are there any other questions or comments?
I'll just add, we've all thanked many of the people around the table. We haven't thanked the man to my right, who is, who headed, headed up this effort on our behalf. I think it's through his resourcefulness that he was able to pull together these many companies and individuals who I think have impeccable reputations in the county, to really give us. Any elected body can only make decisions based on the quality of the information they get. And I know I feel very good that the information we've received is, is good. And I just want to publicly thank Dr. Wilcox for the time and effort and the resourcefulness that he's demonstrated to go about pulling together both members of our team, who have a lot of facilities experience, mostly with schools, and to supplement that with people who have experience with Class A office space. I think then we get the best of both worlds. And I feel like have given us the tools we need as the elected body to go ahead and, and make the decision that we're going to make next week. So, circling back around to the start of this conversation, unless there's anybody else who has any questions or comments, or anything else they want to say. I sort of introduced this by saying that we have a decision to make next Tuesday, where we have three options, one of which is, we can abandon the contract and look elsewhere for our central office. The second option would be to extend the contract for the purchase of this property for an additional 30 days at a cost of $50,000. Or number three, we can go ahead and execute the contract next Tuesday. The Agenda Planning Committee will put this topic on the agenda for next Tuesday. I guess the question I would ask my colleagues is, is there anybody who believes that they need more information or further detail on anything that the superintendent has presented us today to be able, for the board to make that decision between those two, those three options, among those three options, next Tuesday when we meet?
Mrs. Fisher?
I don't want to say I need more information from our team or from Dr. Wilcox. We still have some presentations to hear next week. And I still want to hear, you know, what those other people have to, to offer us, because I want to be totally fair in making my decisions. So, other than that, I'm fine with it.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Let me, maybe, let me clarify a little bit. Does everybody feel like they know what they need to know about this property to make a fair evaluation of it and compare it to any other opportunities that we might have? I guess that's, that's the proper way I should have raised the question. And thank you, Mrs. Fisher, for... Everybody's okay with that? Is there any other direction we think we need to provide the superintendent for providing us more information on this property? Okay. Is there any other questions or comments anybody wants to add, or?
Really quickly, Julian, thank you. I know your job is to facilitate and get groups together. And I think that Julian DeMaro was working with Dr. Wilcox. And this was not a simple process, because we're dealing with an entity that, you know, its corporate headquarters are halfway around the globe. So, it was not an easy prospect, and it seemed to me that Julian was able to get this accomplished almost effortlessly with Dr. Wilcox. And I greatly appreciate his work in this respect. Thank you.
Any other comments, Dr. Wilcox?
I'm sorry, Mrs. Breitman, sure.
Just, and maybe it's obvious, but I'll just say it again, to be sure it's obvious. There is seven days between today and second. And I would encourage any stakeholders, anyone that has an idea or a vision, that they can put something in writing, can get some numbers to us. It needs to happen in seven days. So, I just put that out there.
I think that's, I think that's exactly right. And I'll just say, from my, speaking for myself, it is, we have gone through about a two-year process to get to this point. And I'll just say to my colleagues, and some of my former colleagues who were part of this process while they were still on the board, I am proud of our courage to be able to face this problem. If we can solve the problem of the central office, I think it will, whatever the solution is, I think it will have benefits to the school system for 50 or more years down the road. These are never easy decisions for a school board to make, because we're all focused on getting as many resources to kids as we can. But at some point, you have to solve these kinds of difficult problems. And I'll just say to all of you that I'm proud of the fact that we've been willing to take this process on. I think we need to get to a point where we've got a solution, whether it's next week, next week plus 30 days from then, or very quickly after that. Because if we don't solve this problem now, I don't know when the next opportunity that a school board might have to solve it. So, I just put that out. So I just put that out for, for all of us, as well as for anybody who's interested in providing us an opportunity to, or an option to, to solve this problem. Are there any other questions or comments? Thank you, everybody.